Okay, we're going to call them.
It's something, it's worth something, but I just.
So to call the meeting in order, stand for president. Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matt Wood, please call them.
Trusty Brewer, here.
Trusty Carter.
Here.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Tate.
Trusty Todd, here.
Trusty.
I'm here.
We have an intent motion to go into executive session for discussions of real estate.
So moved, not good.
Moved by trustee Dupont, seconded by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Trusty Brewer. Trusty Carter.
No.
No, the second session.
Let me start again.
Trusty Brewer.
Yes.
Trusty Carter.
Yes.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Tate. Trusty Todd.
Yes.
We're going to go into executive session. Move the bag.
Second is enough.
Was it late your meeting was then?
Did you guys call after? You know why? Because, I know because when I got home, my car wasn't there. I said, oh, either the meeting ran late or they stayed late. Because we got home about ten to ten. What'd you eat? Every still, I want to. Want it so greasy and about chilly, so.
Was Sherry here yesterday?
Yeah, she says she's going to come to all the meetings. But she didn't come.
Now that's one more. I'll ask for a motion to reach the main. Moved by trustee Dupont, seconded by trustee Todd.
Brewer, here. Carter.
Here.
Brewer, same answer.
Oh, yes.
Is the motion to make?
Oh, yes, okay. I said here.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Tate. Trusty Todd.
Yes.
And trustees are.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number four, approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minute, the minutes of the regular board meeting dated May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Moved by trustee Dupont, seconded by trustee Brewer. Sorry, we're going to move by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. I don't need any questions.
I just have a question, uh, to, uh.
Man, here you go.
I'm sorry, for the village perk, I know some here and I don't, I don't know if this is a big thing, but generally when the residents come in and they, you know, make a statement or ask a question, you don't have any response from whoever answered their question. Is that normal or you just write down what they.
Write down their questions and concerns because most time we really do not answer. Man, here you go.
Please forgive me, you know, typically you write down what the question or concern of the resident is.
Okay. I mean, could that be added or, you know, would that be a little?
It depends on the preference of all the trustees, whatever you guys say is what I will do. But it would have to be each one of you in agreement and not someone in one way and the other feeling that it should go the way it's law.
I just kind of believe that I did do some kind of response to their concern.
You don't always get this, uh, from this time.
Oh, okay.
Uh, trustee Brewer, I would agree with you that for the circumstances where we do have a response, it should be included in the minutes.
That would be my opinion.
Any other questions? Item number one.
Trusty Brewer.
Yes.
Trusty Carter.
Yes.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Tate.
Yes.
Trusty Todd.
Yes.
Trusty Dupont.
No.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole dated Jan., I'm sorry, dated June fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
I have a comment. On your second page, uh, where it says R. Lupino, does it, should that be, uh.
Second page where it says what?
Should that be commented? You said committed on the letter. What is that supposed to be?
Can you tell me what paragraph?
Uh, well, the second under R. Lupino, W. P. I. A. Second page, second page. L. U.
Look here.
Third page.
Yes, that's third.
Look here.
Yeah, left here.
That should be.
Comment. Okay, and also, uh, during this, uh, was it June fifth, uh, I asked the question, uh, was a note sent out to the residents concerning this building matter? And, uh, that was not even referenced in the minutes. Should be notes in there.
Mister Mayor, what, I'm going to make a comment that one of the reasons for my no vote on these minutes is going to be the fact that, to trustee Brewer's point, there's no clear indication of what's where in these minutes from page one to page three. It's like on page one, you started out understanding we're going to executive session and coming back, but then from there, it doesn't really outline prior to the commentary what it is that's being discussed. So you don't even know when we're going from discussion points to public comment. So that would be one of the reasons why my no on this is going to be no.
Any other question? I would entertain a motion. Uh, I would like to have that motion withdrawn because the correction is so stated, so I would ask the trustee to make the motion to withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
And I would entertain a motion for the minutes to be approved with the necessary directions.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? I have a question, please call them.
Trusty Carter.
Yes.
Trusty Grant.
No.
Trusty Tate.
No.
Trusty Todd.
Yes.
Trusty Dupont, no. Trusty Brewer.
Yes.
Where is the time? I vote no. Item number C, motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of the committee dated June eighth, twenty eighteen. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Uh, comment. On, uh, June eighth, um, special meeting of the whole, I asked for, uh, environmental impact study, um, for the, um, resolution of twenty seventeen NASS ten, uh, study that was conduct, was a study conducted by Robinson Engineering, EPA, or any other independent contractor. Uh, you do have impact study, but to make it more clear, for anybody to do an impact study, we need a specific kind of environmental impact study, so can you please include that in the, um, in the minutes? And also, um, during the minute, I asked for the, uh, particular study and the mayor asked me to come to the, his office on, well, come to the office on Monday and he'll see if he had the report. And, uh, I just want to say that there was no report and no disclosure. Please add that to the minutes or.
That's not correct. The fact that you did not meet with the mayor after the meeting as you discussed is not a part of the minutes.
It's fine.
The part of the minutes are in fact what actually took place that evening. So now if you want it to go in this week's minutes, it can, but it would not go back, go into last week's.
Yes, only thing I will change on this is the phrase about environmental impact study.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, I'll ask that the minutes, the one that made the motion and the one that made the second, withdraw.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the second.
Okay, and now I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes with the necessary directions.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Todd. I have a question.
Trusty Grant.
Yes.
Trusty Tate. Trusty Todd. Trusty Dupont.
Yes.
Trusty Brewer.
Yes.
Trusty Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment. Our question and comment must be directed to the mayor. The speaker may comment on any matter contained to the business of our village. The speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate or counter reply or vote. Please state your name.
Judy Gansker. It's been a lot of administrations that I've stood up here and talked to. This is one of the first, I have to say. It's the most disappointing and futile. The budget that you were calling a balanced budget, again, we went over the figures page by page, number by number, with people that know their stuff, as well as you seem to think you know yours, but are calling it a balanced budget when it is not. On that, I will leave that. Derek, inasmuch as we are asked to speak directly to you rather than to any trustees, I don't think it is, um, worthy that I have to ask you for your attention while I'm speaking to you. I followed you through two campaigns closely. I gave you one hundred percent loyalty through all those years. In the middle of the previous campaign, there were some issues directed toward me that I tried to talk to you about that you, Mr. Wizwadi, your wife Cecil was aware of, but did nothing about, and they continued. I told you that I could not continue being in your campaign headquarters, but that I would continue to give you one hundred percent loyalty, which I did up to and including the election day. I was at Brickover from before six AM and I was there until seven thirty PM to bring the final totals to your campaign office. I was there, I congratulated you, and I still gave you my loyalty. I still felt that there was something between us. But I've asked questions, I've used honesty, I bring backup with me when I talk, and you know that. With all the years you've known me, you know I won't get up here and say something unless I'm sure of it. And yet, you haven't been there. The loyalty has been one-sided. Therefore, tonight, I have to make it public. I can't live with a one-sided loyalty.
One minute.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Beryl Wilkerson. And, um, my question or comment is, uh, item two on the agenda, motion to recess to executive session with action to be taken. I'm under the impression that you all are getting together to go over this agenda and the, uh, items that are to be discussed in the meeting itself. But it would seem that that is not the, that is not the case. There's just too much, I won't say bickering, but too much disagreement. And I was wondering if that could be taken care of during this executive session? So that when we do come back into the session, you are together, rather than divided.
Thank you, sir. Um, basically, when we went to the executive session, as I said, it was a real estate concern, and we don't make real estate, um, business known until after it's been taken care of. But as far as trying to stop someone or stop bickering back and forth, that's the individual's preference. If they feel that's what they want to do, that's what they will do. I cannot do anything about that, uh, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate, I'm sure the trustees heard what the speaker says, I appreciate that too. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, my name is Dr. Claire Flyer here, I'm here with her. Um, this is my mom, called the farmer. I'm here, um, I'm here to get some help, can you help me? Um, I want to know what should I do about my neighbor, quite a street from me. Um, they be sitting in their car just about every night and if they're going on things, give you a deal. They're sitting in their car with their hair like doing things in my window. And, um, I had phoned them and asked them if they turned their hair like that whenever they're sitting in their car, and they said, uh-huh. They had stopped for a while and then all of a sudden they were doing it at the end of the year. Um, their hair like young happy and they be sitting in their car for about twenty, thirty foot, foot and a half or so. And, um, I had called a few times, they came down, they told me that, that time, they, uh, come out, they hear like get a card, they come over and they check it out. Okay, then, I call the next day, the phone they show up. The first time the phone they came, they told me get a doctor.
Get who, I'm sorry, get who?
They told me to get a doctor, crazy.
Oh, doctor Curtis, okay.
So, I don't think that, I feel like that he didn't want to deal with the issue. So, um, it didn't end last night and the other night I had video tape that I got on my, on my phone that I video taped how long they been sitting out there with their hair like going on high beam. And I want to know what can be done about that, what can I do, or what can I do to help me to just stop them having their hair like.
What, what street is this, ma'am? I'm rounding, I'm not asking for your address, I just want to know the street.
Um, twenty-one, I mean, twenty-one fifteen Peterson.
And this happens every?
At, at every night between at nine o'clock, between nine and two AM.
Uh, I just want to tell you, police chief is here, I'm sure he's noting it, and I'll follow up to make sure. And if it doesn't, please come and let me know. Thank you.
My name is Randy Harkins. First thing I'd like to do is ask, uh, chief, well, I guess you would have to ask trustee Grant, um, when are the finance meetings held, whenever? The next question is, is it true that one of the cars used for code enforcement contains mold? Now, this here says.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that contains.
Is it contains mold, M-O-L-D, okay? Uh, that's just a rumor, I don't know, that's why I'm asking. Also, uh, is it true that one of the police vehicles does not have a siren? So I want to know if that's true. Uh, is it true that you presently drive one of the new police vehicles on a regular basis? And if yes, can you explain what purpose has been cited for this use? Next, um, Joe Wizwadi, um, is noticeably in a position where numerous village funds are under his control. And I wanted to know what checks and balances, um, um, well, if there are any checks and balances and, um, let me see, moving on. Uh, the next one is, uh, what happened regarding the two hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer from the water fund? That has been brought up several times, but it's never been addressed. So I'd like to know, was it paid back and when? Um, and this is regarding the budget meeting, um, I know, I don't know, we don't go there. Where can I, as a resident, receive a breakdown regarding salaries for benefits and things in, uh, you know, regarding village administrative staff? Finally, the last thing is this, uh, I asked you, I wanted to revisit a question previously that I asked you regarding our treasurer, June certain. Uh, I understand she was in some litigation, I mentioned that, and I wanted to know, um, at the time you said you didn't know, so that's been a couple of weeks. So what I wanted to know was, have you found any new information, seeing as she is our treasurer? And the litigation did involve, excuse me, um, the bankruptcy of a bank called Young Court? And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, she was a, uh, executive, uh, let me get it right.
Time is up.
Or executive administrator.
Time is up. First of all, there's no mold in the car. I don't know who your sources are. I don't even know where that came from.
Okay.
Um, as far as a police vehicle has no siren, I don't know how you would know that unless they were trying to stop you and they couldn't put it on. So I have no idea how, and I never heard anything from the chief that there's a vehicle with no siren. I don't know how you would know that, like I stated before, that's, they pulled you over and a lot of times if they don't put a siren on.
Sir, these are rumors, I'm just asking.
I'm trying to answer your rumors. Also, a rumor as far as driving a police vehicle, the vehicle that I have is not a police vehicle. It just says police intercepted, it's not a police vehicle, it's not even licensed as a police vehicle now. Licensed as a municipality car. And there's no way that, uh, Mr. Wizwadi has control over any money. You have seven trustees, like six trustees up there, and you have a finance chairman and a treasurer. So to say whatever rumor that you've heard that he has control over money is ludicrous. I don't know what that means.
I asked for the checks and balances, sir. That's what I asked.
Are you going to allow me to answer or are we going to go back and forth?
Yes, sir, but I'd like my question.
And I said that there is no way. You made the statement that Mr. Wizwadi has control over money. And I was telling you, there's no way that Mr. Wizwadi has control over any money in the village. As far as two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I don't know, that's another rumor. I'm sure whoever you talked to, uh, that trustee, all the rest of the trustees should have explained to them what happened at that particular time. And as far as talking about the treasurers, whatever rumor that you've said.
Well, that's fact.
One more time, I'm not, I'm not going to go back and forth, miss, I'm not going to go back.
I'm not allowing you to misrepresent what I'm saying to you, sir. I'm just saying, that's not a rumor.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
No, sir, I would like to answer.
I don't have, I'm not going back and forth, I'm not going back.
You are our representative, I appreciate if you will answer my question. I appreciate if you will answer my question. We're not going back and forth, but I would appreciate if you answered my question. And when you said wrong, I'll let you know it's wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I'm still looking for my answers, sir.
I don't have an answer now. I don't talk about personnel at open meetings. I do not talk about personnel at open meetings. I tried to explain it to you, but I do not talk about personnel at open meetings.
Pat Count. Since we are revisiting about the police car, I would just like a clarification. You said it is not a police car. It's a police interceptor. Was it purchased as a police car? Yes or no?
Yes.
Was it brought before the board? Yes or no? Did the board vote to let you have executive privilege, which I don't, I don't know if I've ever heard of a mayor having executive privilege. Maybe they do. Evidently, we do. But if, if that was brought before the board as a purchase from Old Plank Bank for three police vehicles, how come it was not brought before the board prior to one of them being chosen to be used for executive purposes?
First of all, ma'am, I don't know what executive privilege is myself. So I don't know.
You're confusing.
And as far as the police.
You're confusing.
As far as the police car, as I just stated, it has on their police vehicle, like Ford has Ford, Chevy has Chevy. They have different labels. That's what that was labeled as, as a police interceptor. And that's only pertaining to the engine. And if you ask the police officers after the meeting, they will let you know that pertains to the engine, not to the vehicle. There is no such thing as a police car. They make it a police car by outfitting it as a police car. So all the cars and vehicles come out as a vehicle, and they make it into a private executive. Like I said, I don't know what executive privilege is. I have no idea. Did the trustees know about the purchase? Yes, they did. Did they vote on it? Yes, they did. Did they know exactly what I was doing? Yes, they did. So I mean, they wouldn't have been able to purchase anything without the consent of the trustees.
I have a question. Martha, if you could do me a favor and do some research and find out, is there any president that says trustees are not supposed to have a comment or something during the, during the open meetings? Can you please address that? Can you provide that to me in writing? You know, if we're not able to comment or, you know, give out submissions or comments or anything, I would really like to know that in writing. And the second thing is, I would like to address certain things that residents brought up. The $250,000 that everybody seems to be interested in today was taken from the TIP four. And as far as I know, 250 was used to pay back TIP four. We never got an explanation of who gave authorization to move that money. It was moved on November 24th, 2017. We never moved, we never voted on it, and we never moved it. Secondly, for the police cars, we voted for three police cars. The police department only got two. We never voted for a municipality car. I don't know where that came from, but as far as I know, we voted for three police cars. And we had the ordinance where everybody approved it. And the police chief, even during the budget hearing, said we only got two. So the third car is up in question. So just to address some of the residents' concerns. So if you can give me that in writing, I would appreciate it very much.
Somebody mentioned about the police.
Please state your name and your name.
Hello? Somebody just mentioned about.
Please state your name and your name.
Running in the morning. Somebody just mentioned about the police sirens. There's no police sirens. I've been out here 15 years. There's no police sirens out here. There are police lights. One almost hit me the year that I moved out here, 2007. Okay? There are no lights. We had lights. So if I didn't live in our neighborhood here, I would have got smacked. And I moved that way. But there's no police sirens. There are lights.
Thank you. What else? I have number six reports of officers. I'm the mayor's report.
I'm very pleased to announce that Set Enterprises here in Salt Village has begun expansion of their operations. Set will begin installation of a laser blanking line, the very first in North America. This is scheduled to begin this summer. Set provides stamped cards for Ford Motor Company and has been in business in Salt Village for over two decades. The new line will go into production in 2019 to produce blanks for exposed and unexposed automotive stampings for the Ford Motor Company. Set and Wayne Steel, which are both located right off the county road, right before you get to the railroad tracks going north. Employees 177 full-time UAW employees in Salt Village. They expect installation to be completed by the spring of 2019, and will be adding additional personnel. Set expects to invest over $17 million in their expansion. I would also like to point out to the residents and to the trustees that after tonight's vote, on the accounts paid, our A.G. report will be reduced to $61,029.41. For our below, $318,337.26, that trustee Brewer pointed out last yesterday at our budget meeting. This is the lowest it has been in many years. According to the past village audit reports, this A.G. report routinely skyrockets to over $1 billion. I want to thank all the partners and trustees who have contributed to this reduction. We are making progress, and numbers speak for themselves. I am so pleased that we are making progress to getting our financial house in order. Thank you so much.
Village clerk, report.
No report.
Village engineer, turn.
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder that the bid opening for the 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue project is this Friday. So keep in mind, with the I-GOT process, construction will not begin until late summer. And that concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
I've just been asked, and this is oversaid from me, and I'm sorry that I didn't think of it, but I'll ask now for a moment of silence for one of our own. If anyone's been in that while they go. Grant Selby used to be a police chief here in the village. He has passed away. So I would like to have a moment of silence for him. Thank you so much. Residents, report.
I have a question.
For Mrs. Arna?
Yes.
Sure.
Mrs. Arna, can you explain to us how the bid process works? It's my understanding that the 223rd project, we approved the ordinance or resolution, I can't remember what, $685,000 or something? And in yesterday's, well, in the budget, we have 200 from the CD, BD block grant that's coming. And then we all have $200,000 from the MFT. That's like $400,000. So my point to you is, where are we going to get that extra money, $285,000? And is that going to be carried over to the next year? Or just explain to us how the building process and how do you determine at what point do you cut off, because we're not going to have any money? And how do you explain that all the MFT funds that generally is going to come in, the $200,000 is going to be used for this specific project, when we have the rest of the village to address, like street and roads, you know, Wagner or Yates and all that? So I want to know, how do you commit your, commit the projects to the monies that come in? How does the whole process work? That's my question. So we'll know. Because we don't have enough money, so I'm just asking.
So specifically for this project, it is 80% federally funded.
Okay.
So it'll be $600 and some thousand dollars that the project entails. That includes everything, from the design process all the way through construction. So some of that money has already been allocated, already paid in previous years. So I don't know what the remainder is, but the remainder, only 80% needs to be paid by the village. So that $200,000 allocation in the budget, I presume, that's what's going to be utilized to pay for the village's portion of the project. So the village certainly has enough money to cover it.
So you're saying there's $200,000 from the CD block grant? Is that it?
This past year, we were not awarded the CDVG grant.
So we're not using MFT funds?
Yes. And we have sufficient MFT funds to cover the costs of the project.
Well, in that case, then, what's the balance in the MFT funds?
Trustee Brewer, right now, we have approximately, well, $150,000 in MFT. Thank you. It is approximation. I can let you know.
So we'll get money in the month, right?
Who will have sufficient money by then?
Okay. So still, we use all the MFT monies. What about the rest of the village?
So every year, we go through a similar process where we take into account how much money is coming in through MFT funds, through CDVG funds, if we've received a grant, and then the current balance that's in that MFT fund. And then we determine what repairs need to be made. And then there's a discussion held with the public works director in terms of priorities. And then we make a decision on whether we're going to move forward with a street program that year. We had this discussion back in winter of this year, and it was decided that the village did not have enough funds to do an independent MFT resurfacing project. So we just went forward with the federally funded 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue project that we're doing this year. So we're banking some of that money so that when next year comes around, we'll have that additional fund to do, hopefully, a street program. And hopefully, we'll get a CDVG grant to go along with that, and then we can do a significant resurfacing program.
So you used the CDVG grant money did come in this year, you said? If I'm not mistaken?
Right.
Was it in budget? If I'm not mistaken? Okay. Lieutenant Markness?
Yes.
Continue your comment.
Yes.
Thank you. Treasurer, report with Judy Sutter.
Yes. Thank you, mayor and trustees. Since my last report, we've worked really hard to finalize the budget, which I know the board will be voting on this evening. This was a difficult budget because we did need to develop a balanced budget focus. To accomplish this, we needed to reduce expenses to match our revenues. We needed to recognize that in the past five years, the village's property taxes have been reduced by $612,000, and this needed to be reflected in our spending levels. In addition, we have the auditors from Miller Cooper on site this week, next week, and the week after. Last year, the auditors didn't even come to the village until the end of the summer, the beginning of fall. And the year-end audited financials were not completed until seven months after the end of the fiscal year. This year, in accordance with industry best practices, we are targeting to be completed much, much sooner than that. To get to this point, though, we've worked very hard to clean up the balance sheet, to make it presentable to the auditors. Previously, we had negative cash balances that were not accurate. The inter-fund borrowings needed to be reconciled and validated. The fixed asset balances needed to be scrutinized and corrected. The fee income allowances needed to be corrected. Accruals needed to be processed. And to do this, we did work closely with our software vendor, Civic, as well as our accounts. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
Got a question. Mr. Mayor, I have a question, one more question for, I forgot to ask. I think it was two minutes ago, I don't know, but you were the mayor. Somebody was supposed to give us something in writing because the OSN grant was only $227,000. Somebody was supposed to give us something in writing that shows that the vendor knows not to go over $227,000 up. Can we, do you have that in writing, or where should I get that? It was promised to the board that we would have something in writing saying, the vendor knows he's not supposed to give over $227,000. There was an ordinance that we approved for over $500,000. So we're supposed to get something in writing, so.
I could look at the meeting minutes. That might be a good source of information where that discussion was held. But I can testify that that's been made completely clear to the contractor that we can't go over that dollar amount.
A lot of times, things are made clear to somebody, and it's always interpreted somewhere else. So I would appreciate something in writing that the vendor knows he's not supposed to go over $227,000.
I understand that we're, the village is in control of the situation because the contract has been reduced to the amount of funding that the village has. So if the contractor were to just go rogue and start doing work that they weren't approved to do, we wouldn't approve payment for them.
Yeah, but it's an ordinance up to $5 million, $1,000. So, I mean, I don't, that's another thing. Maybe you should explain that process because I understand how we could approve an ordinance over $500,000, but the grant says $227,000. That in itself, we should err in caution because we put this ordinance out there saying the vendor could go up to $500,000, when we only have $227,000. And that's a reimbursable grant. So maybe the process is different, or we're not, we don't quite know what, how it works. But it seems like it needs to be, if we're going to go out for bid, the bid shouldn't be more than $227,000 because that's what we have money for. But we actually had a bid for $500,000.
So this is a typical occurrence, and we have contract language that addresses it that states that the municipality will only be able to fund a certain amount. We have no control over how bids come in, and this is the way it works in the village of Salt Village, as well as all the other clients that my firm has experience with. So sometimes the bid's coming way too high, and then we will do exactly what we've done in this instance, where we knock down the price to the level that the village has funded. And we do that through eliminating items that are in the scope of the project, and this is no different.
Okay. So we'll get something in writing saying that it shouldn't go over $227,000?
I will get those meeting minutes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I also have a question for treasurer. On page 25 of the budget, it has a statement that says, "The mayor and his destiny may authorize budget transfer within the fund." This budget isn't, can you explain to me, how would you say, "The mayor and his destiny" in a budget? And it seems to me that's stripping the trustees of their fiduciary duties, and that's illegal in itself. So can you explain to me why that's in the budget? And why should it be taken out?
This speaks to budget amendments. So any amendments to the budget, if there's expenses that are going to go over the approved appropriation budget, need to come to the trustees for their approval. But if there are line item switches within a fund, the mayor is authorized to be able to make those. So if, you know, there is, you know, professional service, more professional services, but we're going to take it out of supplies, and we're still going to make sure that we live within the appropriation budget, that's what we're talking about here. So that's not taking any approval authority away from the trustees at all, because you approved the appropriation in total.
But we didn't approve the mayor to do that. That's our job.
Yes.
I'm quite sure trustees.
Anything else, trustee y'all?
Uh-huh.
Anything else, trustee?
Page twenty-five.
Anything else?
I think this should be taken out.
Reports of the Department's Finance and Administration, Director Mohan Raul.
Thank you, Mayor and the board. Um, I have a couple of reports. Uh, I have finished DEA financial report for the year-end, um, four thirty-two thousand and eighteen. The DOJ requires we are to be compliant with the DEA as in the DOJ. I have provided a copy of the report to Chief of Police, uh, Mr. Kowalski, and also I have provided a copy to you, may I also? And we are compliant until June of two thousand nineteen. The funds will be coming as and when, um, the, you know, officer assigned to that work can accept his, uh, responsibilities. We have collected from, uh, Lenon, uh, Controller's Office in the amount of seventy thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, fourteen cents towards J and P tickets. That is for the month of May. Uh, we have collected the real estate tax levy receipts for the month of May in the amount of eighty thousand, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. We have also received a FEMA grant for the fire department in the amount of three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, the articles will be here, they begin here once again on June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, and will be here until June twenty-ninth to carry out the auditing duties. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department Chief Al Ballbrager.
Thank you, Mayor and the board. For the period from May sixteenth through June sixth, the fire department responded thirty-two calls. I had eight fire alarms, two vehicle accidents, ten ambulance assists, six covered on the outside, calls, and six automatic gates to our surrounding towns. Just make a note that in the next four or five days, it's gonna get up in the upper nineties. You wanna keep an eye out for the elderly and our neighbors, and be advised that I've got people in my station for a cooling center from six AM to six PM. And if need be, I'll keep them in there longer. And that's my report.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, mister mayor, trustees. For the reporting period, we responded to six eight hundred and eighty-five calls for service with eleven arrests. Cases of interest, I'd like to clarify, uh, an incident which occurred on May twenty-ninth on the two thousand block, the two seventeen place. A complaint called to report her partner was going to her house to break out on the windows. When the police arrived, the offender left the area, searching the area. Officers found the offender, uh, driving and avoiding stop signs. The offender was pulled over and arrested for several traffic violations, so include driving on suspended driver's license. Defender was, uh, taken into custody and given an I-bond, which is a retirement sent by, released and told not to return to the two thousand block, the two seventeen place. Later that afternoon, the offender, of course, returned to the address and a police were called again. Victim advised she was willing to sign complaints against the offender. So with that, the responding officers attempted to arrest the offender. When the officer advised the offender was under arrest, she ran from that officer. Officer waited for backup and again advised the offender she was under arrest. The offender pulled away from the officer and began to run. At this time, the officer deployed his taser and tased the offender. Once tased, the offender fell and hit her face on the pavement. The officer called the ambulance, since the offender sustained cuts bruises from falling. The offender was taken to the hospital and released back for custody for department, uh, for processing of the arrest. While in custody, the offender was given her cell phone to make phone calls, which, uh, she did not do and proceeded to go on Facebook. The offender made accusatory remarks about the Sauk Village Police Department, which were completely false and untrue. This matter is now in the court system to be adjudicated accordingly. Just wanted to make that, uh, make that clear, what, what actually happened. To some better news, National Mayhem is starting to take, uh, take shape, which is set for August seventh, twenty fifteen. If you'd still like to volunteer or have any suggestion, feel free to call me or email me at SaukVillagePD@gmail.com, or message me on Facebook, call me direct, seven oh eight, seven five three, five one five one. Uh, I met with Director, uh, FBI Director Christopher Ray on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth. I voiced my opinion about the continued gun violence we seek in and around our area. The director agreed that gun violence is a, a big issue. He said that until there are set, set sentencing guidelines adopted by each state, similar to the federal sentencing guidelines, the disparity amongst state jurisdictions and their sentencing of offenders will continue to be an issue. If anyone would like to talk about this further, please feel free to stop by the police station, or we can discuss this further at a monthly public safety meeting. Uh, also, and lastly, I have received five letters of appreciation from Miss Kim Kreisik, the Bloom Trail truancy officer. The letters were commending Detective Sergeant Rob Grossman, Sergeant Chris Mizek, Officer Josh Morris, Officer Matt Zyliss, and Officer Michael Huppenango for their service, and assisting her with home visits throughout the year, uh, of the Sauk Village truancy offenders. And to save time, I won't read all five, but they pretty much said the following. Dear Chief Kowalski, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and appreciation for the assistance of Officer Morris and for his considerate service displayed by assisting me on truancy home visits. As a second-year truancy officer at Bloom Trail High School, I've learned the high demand of the Sauk Village Police Department, and truly thankful for being able to work with that in between calls, and as well as for such an experienced officer. I'd like to recognize Officer Morris from the Sauk Village Police Department who assisted me on home visits. Officer Morris conducted over one hundred home visits with me. Officer Morris taught me more, uh, taught me how to be vigilant in the community when I conducted home visits on my own. This was very helpful when Officer Morris was busy dealing with other official police business. Without his assistance, I would not be able to reduce the truancy rate at Bloom Trail High School. Officer Morris is an admirable professional who displays profound service. Officer Morris is an exceptional employee who is an asset to the Sauk Village Police Department and to the law enforcement profession. With great appreciation, Kim Kreisik, Bloom Trail truancy officer. And I've got five other, uh, such letters, um, that you could see if you'd like to, to copy. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alababer.
Thank you, mister mayor and the board. In conjunction with the fire department, uh, report calls that we assisted on, uh, tomorrow, Thursday the fourteenth, uh, we have our monthly smart meeting that's gonna be held in Annover Township, uh, that'll be at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Uh, just a quick reminder, too, school is out, please be careful while you're driving, watch out for little kids, uh, playing on the roadway, uh, running between cars, in and out between cars. And touching on the note, uh, of Chief Snobwriting about the heat wave coming in this weekend. Also, too, make sure you check on, uh, you know, kids in cars, pets in cars, you know, the kids pretty hot in the cars when the kids and pets are in there, so, uh, that concludes my report, make sure.
Thank you. Economic Director, Director Joseph Leguizamo.
Thank you, mister mayor. Uh, pleased to report that all but three businesses have renewed their licenses, uh, with us thus far. Uh, we've flagged over fifty thousand dollars in business license fees. Likewise, we have issued over a hundred contractor licenses. Thus far this year, we have a total revenue of four thousand for those. Liquor license renewals were mailed out, uh, in May and are due at the end of June. Since June first, nine certificates of occupancy were applied, applied for. Five were approved, four have not yet been approved. We've begun validating ownership with Cook County Assessor's Office, as well as Cook County Recorder of Deeds to ensure that the owner or authorized agent is receiving application for the certificates of occupancy. We are also verifying that the work performed was permitted by the village. It is worth noting that failure to obtain a permit results in the cost of the permit doubling, and the owner could face a citation as well. The village issued thirty-nine building permits in the month of May for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine, ninety cents in improvements, and total permit fees collected were five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Given the numerous inconsistencies discovered in the process of issuing certificates of occupancy, we are working on standardizing our forms, and the village will be, uh, using those going forward. Uh, we will also be working with Bloom Township Assessor and Cook County Assessor's Office to ensure that erroneous exemptions are removed from investment properties, as we've discovered many exemptions on investment properties which have been in place for many years. We've also identified, uh, vacant homes with the assessor's office. Uh, this will also improve our overall property tax collection rate. The board has before this evening, uh, resolution granting a class eight tax classification for property being purchased by Three Star Realty LLC. The renovations being done to the building would not be possible but for the class eight designation. The class eight has been part of the RFP already approved by the board. The board also has before it a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property at seventeen seventeen Sauk Trail, which is the old abandoned lawn net. The village issued the RFP, and the two individual bidders, um, put their bids in for the property. The winning bidder placed a bid for forty thousand dollars, that is Tony Abazir, who is closing on the property under Three Star Realty LLC. We will be closing on the property Friday, June twenty-second at nine AM. As the mayor reported earlier tonight, Set Enterprises is in the process of expansion at the Sauk Village facility. They've begun working with ComEd on upgrading the electrical service to accommodate the power demand for the laser cutting equipment. As a final thought, residents are encouraged to get Village Vehicle stickers, which are, have already, the sale is already begun here at Village Hall. There are only sixteen days left to get yours. These must be displayed on your vehicle by midnight, July first, or you will be given a citation. The cost of the Village Vehicle stickers doubled after June thirtieth. Also is noted, Village Hall will be closed Saturday, June thirtieth, so get in line and get it done quick.
Okay.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Got a question. Uh, mister, listen, my, uh, the class eight that you're asking for, for, uh, properties at seventeen seventeen and seventeen twenty-one is the old block net? Now, I asked the, uh, well, Friday I asked to have a copy of the, uh, site assessment, and according to the mayor, he told me to come in Monday and get it, but, uh, when I came, he said there wasn't one, so, um, I'm asking, is there a site, was there a site assessment done on that particular property?
No, that is correct. We do not have a site assessment of that property.
Okay, now, it, now, it's my understanding that the, uh, nitrogen net was one of the, uh, sites that EPA inspected during the water crisis, and that, uh, it closed soon after was because of the clean source that went into the ground? And yet, we're trying to sell this property to somebody without giving them some kind of disclosure or site assessment, and we don't have a site assessment, so what liability do we have if they come back? Like, I know you said "as-is," but you, uh, we don't have a disclosure form or anything, uh, from the buyer, or we should have it in our files, uh, because the, the soil was contaminated and they were forced to clean it up, and they were closed, but I'm wondering, are we telling the, the, uh, buyers that we had a problem there before?
Okay, two points. The first one I'll address is pretty simple. In the purchase agreement with Mr. Abazir, Mr. Abazir, and in the RFP, it stated that the owner will be buying the property as-is, and the village will not have any, uh, in other words, buyers aren't gonna come back and make any claims against the village. As to the second point, the IEPA assessment that you're discussing, um, did not include that property. Uh, there was no indication on the report that was issued, uh, through the IEPA, uh, for this property, and there was no cleanup or any contamination noted in the IEPA study that was done. I saw the, the study back in, gosh, I think it was twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen, I do not recall that property being listed on that at all.
Oh, so we actually have something?
No, we don't, that's what I explained, there was nothing indicated on it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, as-is, so, um, it's my understanding, whenever you buy a property, commercial or residence in the state of Illinois, you have to disclose something. So you're saying there's nothing there in that particular, this, this truancy, there's nothing there on that site?
To my knowledge.
Okay.
And to everything that I've seen, that is a correct statement, there is nothing, to my knowledge, that would indicate that. And as I said, the, the buyer is buying the property as-is.
All right, and another thing is that, since the building was built before nineteen seventy-eight, there's no asbestos problem in there either?
To my knowledge, there is no issues. If there are, then the owner, the buyer of the property would have to remediate it at his expense.
Okay, um, reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council chair, Evan Farmer. You want to maybe give him a mic, please?
Our next meeting for the senior advisory committee is this Thursday, tomorrow, June fourteenth, and of course, all are welcome. We are finalizing our trip for the seniors to the Four Winds Casino on July twenty-eighth. It should have flyers out in the next couple of weeks for more information, uh, probably after our meeting on tomorrow. We also are planning a grand tour this day, where our senior grandparents invite their grand trip, get out some hamburgers, hot dogs, and picket area behind Village Hall for August twenty, uh, twenty-fifth. More details will come. Our village clerk has graciously made, graciously made the senior committee, uh, new applications for space usage for the senior centers, or anyone that, uh, needs to use the senior senior center, and, uh, applications, the new applications are at the front desk. Also rental applications, of course, can be obtained there as well, uh, for the senior center. Our senior sorority class has moved their classes to every Friday, uh, from Wednesday from nine AM to twelve PM during the summer, and where they can hope to court more seniors. Also, our new calendar is out, and I do have some copies for you all, and, um, we got two booths that one has the door, front door entrance, and one is the back door, just at the senior center. And please don't forget our game night every first and third Friday with our new time, uh, six PM to ten PM. Please join us, uh, this Friday, as this is the third Friday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. The other panelists, the back of the line. Reports of trustees and standing committees and comments. Public Service Committee, trustee Vernon Brew.
The Public Service Committee is gonna have a, uh, energy saving event, uh, located at the pool, I'm sorry. Okay. Public Service Committee is gonna have a event on June twenty-second from four thirty to, uh, this Friday, June twenty-second from four thirty-seven. This is, uh, an event put on by Nycore, and, uh, it's gonna be held at the Candlelight, um, Pool House, and this is only for those residents of Candlelight and Weatherstone, and I would try to get, uh, crowd hours stays in there. But if you come to the seminar, it gives you free thermostat, free air raiders, free, um, showerheads, um, they'll wrap your pipes. The reason why we chose, uh, the Candlelight, uh, Pool House is because of the nature of the-
The reason why we chose the Candlelight Pool House is because of the nature of the houses in Weatherstone and Candlelight, they're all of the same type modular and trailer houses. If this event is successful, we'll move over to the village, and another reason why we hold in the Candlelight, our state funds are limited, and their program ends June thirtieth. Once we do the three subdivisions over there, we'll do the rest of the village once the funding becomes available around September first. I employ, if you know anybody who lives in Candlelight, Weatherstone, or Carlisle States, come in, all this stuff is free, there's a free assessment, they come in and let you know what you can do, there's an injury-saving devices that they provide for your home. It's good, and it doesn't cost anything regardless of your income. So I employ anybody who knows to come on over to the pool house on June twenty-second from the, from four-thirty to seven to sign up for the event. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Budget and Finance. Trustee Roger Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month in May, we did not have a meeting. We will have another meeting June twentieth, which is the third Wednesday of the month, here, seven p.m. in the Sunday. And then, again, tonight, we will be doing appropriations for the budget tonight, and as we had discussed yesterday, is balance, revenue, due expenses, and most of those that go.
Thank you. Parks and Recs and Youth Services, I'm looking currently, looking, and it's in the website for a recreation, part-time recreation director, and also, I'm also looking for volunteers for an event that we would want to put on in July, so I would like to ask for any volunteers that would like to help us coordinate this, and it will be first Friday or Thursday in July here behind Village Hall. So I'm looking to have this event, I'm looking for volunteers to help put this event on. That's all that I have. Housing and Governmental, trustee Tate? Orders Review Committee, trustee Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Orders Review Committee met this last Monday, and we are finishing up the false alarm ordinance. There's a few things that need to be changed, and then I will present it to the board. Also, our next meeting, well, for the summer, what we've decided to do, we're changing the meeting. We normally would have it at six-thirty at night, the next meeting is going to be July ninth at ten a.m. in the morning, and we'll be here in a couple of hours. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Elizabeth Dupine, I'm sorry, trustee Beth Dupine.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did not meet tonight since we had this meeting. And unfortunately, so we will be doing a little bit of work behind the scenes relative to National Night Out, and I would remind the board that National Night Out is the first Tuesday in August, so I would suggest that we cancel the committee meeting that night, if you can take that under advisement, and then all of us should be out back for the event instead. The other thing, I'm going to change gears here now, public works director Weller was not here tonight, but did share a report with us, so I'm just going to go through a few of his items for the public's benefit. He's mentioned a concern about garbage being dumped at Carolway Avenue Court, where staff has cleaned it up, but if anybody happens to see it happening, and certainly not just there, but anywhere within the community, be a part of the solution, and call the police if you see it happening, please. You have to speak up. Streetsweep started this week, asking all residents not to throw debris, put debris in the roadways, tickets could be issued if you're parked there as well, so please keep that in mind as that continues. He's also mentioned the fact that they have part-time seasonal help to help with the grass cutting and some of the other items this summer. The first worker, I believe, was supposed to start work this week, but there are still some open positions, so again, those posts are out on the village website if you are interested in, in any of those. The flushing is on the east side of town, that would be east of Torrance Avenue, south of Sauk Trail until completed, I believe that's going on currently. He's also mentioned that the ball field demolition has started, but has been very slow-going because of other priorities and emergencies that have been creeping up, and as they can, they're working on that. He also mentioned, speaking of the grass cutting, it continues at several locations, Carroll Park and all the fields, pump houses, Sauk Trail, towards Parkway, Village Hall, Sauk Point, Marquee Field, Missalinas Lots, Carlisle States, Glorian. Again, slow goes because of the weather, with a lot of the rain recently. And that's pretty much what he had referenced there, and that concludes my report and comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Trustee Todd hasn't been given a committee yet, I'm still swan-lating that, but at the next board meeting, he will have one, but I would like to ask if he has any comments, and I'm sure he's going to be at the next committee meeting to ask for volunteer, but at this time, Mr. Todd, do you have any comments for the board?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. The only comment I have is that I'll be glad to accept that responsibility and try to do the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. A new business? We have a add-on to accounts payable, does everyone, first of all, get this add-on? Okay, so I would accept the motion to approve a accounts payable with the new sum of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventeen cents.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Dupine, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have a question and comment. Mr. Mayor, I ask, every time we have accounts payable for the copies of the invoices for Dr. Strutter and Olsen and Sturts, and also, well, I'm just starting to ask for that. Now, it seems to me that Dr. Strutter is being paid about six thousand dollars a month, possibly, and from a financial standpoint, and she's only part-time, I'd like to take a copy of those, look at those invoices that she submitted, and also Olsen and Sturts, some of those invoices that's included on the, not this account payable, but other accounts payable are really owed. I'd like to take a look at those and see what just what are we paying Dr. Strutter and Olsen and Sturts for their services? Now, I understand that trustees vote for them, but they should know what's in those invoices. Every month, she, she gets a payment of about five, six thousand dollars, Olsen and Sturts get like nineteen or twenty. I'm just averaging it, I'm not saying that's the exact figure, but I'd like to take a look at those invoices and see exactly just what we are paying for, and especially since Lap seems to be the attorney requested by most people, I'd like to see what we're paying them for too, when they show up on the accounts payable, I'll fit there on this one, but I would like to copy all those invoices for Dr. Strutter, I'd like to see that she be removed, so we can take a look at what, just what we're paying her for, and Olsen and Sturts too.
What do you mean, Roger?
I mean, I don't know, do, do, do you move, do you move the payment, do you ever take a look at it, or what?
You can always take a look at the accounts payable, trustee, if we have to.
I have accounts payable.
You said you wanted to look at her invoice, you can always take a look at her invoice, you can come in and ask to look at it.
Mr. Mayor, I have been asking for copies of her invoices for, every time we get accounts payable, you don't, you can't go in there and ask for, Mohawk doesn't give you a copy. You know, you said, well, he said, go to the mayor, the mayor doesn't have a copy. I'd like to see a copy. We voted on the mayor, and we never get a copy. We never get a copy. You say, meet you in the back, meet you in the back, never get a copy. Said for request, never get a copy. Uh, you, there's nothing on your, I'm sorry, but I never get a copy. I would like to see a copy of these invoices that we're paying. We, we voted to pay them, we should see them, we should know, trustees should know what we're paying. Taxpayers know.
You could see, as I stated, you could see a copy of all invoices.
I want a copy of it, I don't want to just see.
Will you disseminate it like you did before with all the papers?
Yeah, that's right. Any trustee up there wants to see one, I can give you a copy, and it's public information.
Then you, like I stated before, you can get a copy.
Okay, that's, I must, we go tomorrow, we'll get copies of everything.
What's the, what's the, what's the?
Everything, I have been asking for copies of her invoices since.
Oh, okay, yeah, you can get a copy of every one.
Yeah.
Any other question?
And copies of Olsen and Sturts?
Any other question?
Coming.
Okay.
So I noticed that we'll be paying Olsen about twenty-one thousand dollars, I just want to point out there, if I'm not mistaken, this is, like you mentioned, that county really got me drastically decreasing our aging report, and I think that, if I'm not mistaken, this is one of the last few bills that we have for Olsen, that's outstanding, so if accounts payable is passed tonight, you will not move very much more as a breakdown.
Unless there's some new deals that have been run up yet.
Correct.
And in the last six months, we've paid Olsen and Sturts over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, yes, we're trying to catch up, and that's what we owe from two thousand and sixteen. So, since two thousand and sixteen, so we paid them since January for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So you should be, I'm trying to get a copy of that either. Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. You mentioned that you paid down the aging report to sixty-one thousand?
Yeah.
Was that paid off due to the tax anticipation warrant?
No, I'm sorry.
The aging report has been reduced to sixty-one thousand, we owe three-hundred-and-seven-thousand. Where did the money come from? Is it from the tax anticipation warrant, we had like four hundred thousand left, I would say?
Portion of money came from tax, let me review, a portion of money that was from tax anticipation warrant. The three bills that were paid were from tax anticipation warrants.
Thank you.
So we can have a breakdown of the five fifty, of the five thirty-five?
Sure, sure. I can send it to you tomorrow or another.
No, I'm in the office, I can copy those invoices.
Any other question? Madam Court?
Trustee Tate? Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Dupine?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Present.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution of the sale of the village of Sauk Village for surplus property, better known as the property from the tween, I'm sorry, tween, and also for the laundry mat.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Dupine. Any question? Madam Court?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Dupine?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution of the village of Sauk Village, Cookinwell County, authorizing the Class Eight property tax incentive for the property known, commonly known as the Seventeen Seventeen and Seventeen Twenty-one East Sauk Trail, the laundry mat again in the cleaners.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Dupine, seconded by trustee Grant. Any question? Madam Court?
Trustee Dupine?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance to ratify the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen corporation for the fiscal year of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, better known as our budget.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Dupine. Question?
Comment? Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have repeatedly, well, I have repeatedly asked you, asked for breakdown of salaries and fringe benefits, and for any trustee that wants to approve this, but they have no idea of the increases, decrease, or what, what any individual employee is going to get, because it's all lump sum. There's one reason why I, we both know for this, because the information is not there. We have asked and asked for this information, the budget has been out there for a month, and nobody wants to actually give us a breakdown of salaries, which is public information, but we can't get it. The second thing, the second reason why, what I have a concern is that the scenario that the treasurer gave us about operational transfer, this is not clear, it was not brought to, before the board, to see if we want to do operational transfer. This is something, I guess, whoever decided to do. Uh, there's no written guidelines, or anybody from the attorney explains what operational transfers are, so we need to know what we're getting into, because in this budget, there's a lot of operational transfer, where they're moving money from one point to the other, and it's, and we're never going to pay it back. According to Illinois State statute, you have to pay money back within the, uh, within the fiscal year, but if you use this operational budget scenario, we don't have to pay it back for some reason. This public question was not brought before the board, nor was it brought to the people. People don't, are going to give us contracts to move money and spend the money, or when it, or no, wherever we feel like it. You know, this question has to be gone to the people, and it was never given to the people, nor was it even brought before the board. This is something, I don't know who decided to do this, but I think we need further discussion on it, and something to write from the attorney's stand, this is legal for us to do. If it's legal, it's fine, we'll go with it, but right now, we have been, we have been using the same method of transfer for the last, since this inception, all of a sudden there's these operational transfers, and for some reason, we're not going to pay back the water fund. How many residents know out there that you, you got to pay the water funds for day-to-day operation? That's not fair to residents, and to myself, because I know my tax dollars being used for day-to-day operation, it's used for the water fund, I will stay in water-related items. And now we got MFT funds, you move money in and out of MFT funds, it's, it's ridiculous that, we call it operational transfer, uh, transfer is a transfer, you got to get it back, it's simple as that. Second, uh, the fourth thing I want to talk about is that, two times as much money is used is in the, from the water sewer revenue as it is from last year, is going to be pooled out of the, the water sewer fund. It does not make any sense. Last year, it was a certain amount, now it's twice that much. Where is, what, what about us? You know, we need, the end of budget, it says that infrastructure improvement will be needed as, uh, done as needed. The whole infrastructure needs to be done. You know, we're not talking about Lake Michigan water, anything, we need something safe for our families. The infrastructure needs to be improved, and even though you said some, you want to say something, the budget, there's nothing in that budget that says any infrastructure improved, there's only a sixty thousand dollar study, another study, in the sewer fund for, related to the water. We're paying almost two-point-five million dollars, but we're going to get to April twenty nineteen, and there's absolutely nothing in here for the residents. I think that's unfair. Now, even though we expect revenue of two-point-five million, we, we also are going to get, in that two-point-five million, we're going to get over nine-hundred thousand dollars for the sewer fund. Now, CERNIA Act for Robinson Engineering came, came in and said they need improvements for about five-hundred-eighty-two for stuff that's mandatory from WRD. We have the money. They're going to take the sewer money, they're spending on something that has absolutely nothing to do with sewer. I don't understand why we raise residents' rates. We spend the money because we get so much money, and then all of a sudden, we have to go get a loan. That's ridiculous. And then it's not in the budget. And then all through that budget, you goes, uh, the budget goes, the mayor and his destiny. When you say the mayor and his destiny, it doesn't include trustees? I thought we were here to watch the money. So I'm just saying, there's five reasons right there why this budget is not valid, because when you have a valid budget, it means that you have revenue on this side, and then you have expenditures on this side. We have more expenditures than we do revenue. Something needs to be cut back, and we need to start addressing what the residents need, because as I said in the end, we're not only talking about the improvements to the infrastructure, which is needed in our valley, this infrastructure is almost sixty-five years old, this moment as we speak. We need to improve. We need to improve the infrastructure. We need to maintain the housing here, keep people here. They're living left and right because the first thing they say, a pipe busted in my house, I can't get this fixed. The infrastructure needs to be addressed. I know you said you got it in your plan, but what about now? We have been in it twenty years talking about getting this infrastructure fixed. You know, this, I, I'll wait till you go to the court stop.
Uh, you don't have to interrupt us because it seems like you're talking to the lawyer as opposed to the mayor. So you sit down.
Okay, so you shouldn't interrupt me while I'm talking.
I'm not interrupting.
Okay. And you shouldn't even speak.
Excuse me.
Excuse, but we don't need to go back before the mayor, because mayor's running the reason and you was interrupting my conversation.
Madam trustee, madam trustee, are you through with your comments? Are you through with your comments?
I'm not finished, you know, I'm not finished. I'm not finished with my conversation. I was waiting till you were finished, finished with the meeting.
Were you finished with your comments?
No, I'm not finished. So as I was, as I was stating. As I was stating, if the residents are going to pay that much money, two-point-five million dollars is anticipated, anticipated revenue that we get, we should get something out of our money. Now, the residents along Yates and South Crossburg had a recent incident where they were out of water for a day and a half. You paid, you paid the water bill every month and you kind of trying to tell me that we can't come in and say, well, we need to fix a pipe in your area and that you, we didn't already paid your water bill, you can't get it fixed? Let's be real, you don't have to do the whole tally at one time. You need to address the issue at hand. We have had this problem for a long time. We need to do something about it. That's why residents are so upset and there's nothing we can do for residents here. You know, so I'm just saying, all this money is coming in and out, MFTs we're getting, the money is used for everything else of what it's intended to. So I'm, I'm finished with that now.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I have a comment there. I want everybody to know that I disagree with a lot of what she said. The one thing I will say though, that we still do have outstanding is, the treasurer, you heard her say it again last night, she is following up with the attorneys to get in writing the answer on the operational transfers versus the advances. We talked about that at the budget hearing back in May. We talked about it last week, we talked about it last night. Secondly, we are living within our means. We have not lived within our means for years here. The revenues, if you look at page five of the budget, shake your head all you want, the revenues on page five are listed here along with the expenses. I'm happy to sit down. Trustee Grant is happy to sit down. The treasurer, the finance director, any of us are happy to sit down and talk with any of you about questions you have. This is a balanced budget. We are living within our means and it is realistic expectations about what our revenue sources are these years.
Excuse me, we're not, we're not going to sit there and blur down the alley. I'm sorry. We are not going to sit here. Nobody's speaking to you, ma'am. No, she is not addressing you. We will not go back and. Thank you, because we will not go back and forth and do this. That's not how meetings are conducted. That's not how I conduct meetings. We will not go back and forth. You had a chance to talk about public comment.
We are children. We are not children.
You're acting like one. You're acting like one right now, ma'am.
So if you have any more questions, suck it up until next week. Okay, if your basement is flooded, suck it up until next week because you had your three minutes. That don't work for me, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Madam court, this is called wrong.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zuppan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Any of the second? Moved by trustee Brewer, second. The motion was moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Tate. All the tables, please, are sitting by, not saying I. Close it. Thank you.
Living within your means, that, that's the.
Your pastor's little button over here. Your minute acting is on, it's on.